Okay, first order of business is, uh, the Conseg grant.
Good evening, um...
No, I'm making...
Good on you. Good. Um, I'm just asking for approval to apply for the two state grants that I've applied for every year. This year, uh, the state is offering the Conseg program, seven thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars for one grant and three thousand two hundred dollars for the second grant. Um, that's total of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay. And, uh, Laura informed me that, uh, we approve this, um, uh, the...
Council has to approve the budget, which is on the fourteenth. This is due on the eighteenth.
Correct.
So we're in line, I think. So all we'd need is a motion to, uh, approve the Conseg grant for the twenty-twenty-five, the Conseg grant.
Yes, uh, I would make that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion, comments? Nope, good. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Tanya present?
Yeah.
Okay. Or you can stand at the tall one there, whichever you want to do.
Yeah, I am Tanya Keller-Martin, and I am here because I like to... On the road that's... It's quite a hazard for my children and myself. Um, currently, it's just what is posted in, for the county, I believe, which is forty-five mile an hour. So it's been multiple years since I've moved to this residence. Um, there, I have neighbors who treat that road like a drag strip. There's a blind spot on this road because of houses on it, and there's also curves on this road. I've noticed recently that highway department was out there and put a recommended, um, speed limit of thirty around the curves, just recommend it. Um, I like it lowered, so I have a special needs child. The area that I loathe this child on is right next to the road, just structurally, that's addition to the way we built the accommodations. Very dangerous. Um, we've had our dog killed standing alongside the road. My neighbor, brother's, had his dog killed alongside the road. The garage that sits next to the houses besides the road, the neighbor has had somebody run right up on into his home through the garage. It's, it's a high-traffic area. Um, I have neighbors that live down the road, and everybody's very respectful of the situation of the one. I've been standing out there with this boy that needs help standing sometimes, or sometimes he's in such a... And they've flown by with him. So when I spoke to them about it, they said, "Well, the speed limit is forty-five, and we're not gonna..." But I'm hoping that maybe prove stop this from possibly maybe injury to myself and my children, because they're not real. And also, on the same, same property, that's a drive, the school bus, you... It's a blind driveway.
You can't see it if you come in.
And it's busted. I don't think the school, at this point, is gonna take the issue or even ask for a bus to put up. Again, I notice the county... All these school buses, they're starting, and there aren't even any kids on them, except us, and it's a straight line, so I'm trying to do something.
Okay. We can take this under advisement and see about the school bus turnaround and get with the county highway department and maybe Chris and see about the speed limit, uh, issue. Uh, is it, is it posted now at...
There's no speed limit posted at all, but I want it lower.
Okay, I do have, uh, some information on that. Uh, it is now thirty mile an hour recommendation, okay, and so, but it's not an ordinance, not, uh, the speed limit, so it's just a recommendation of thirty. There's a sign at south. And now, Tanya, Tanya, I would like to clarify, it has on here County Road six forty north, but I'd like to clarify that, that's six forty east.
That's incorrect. I live on six forty east.
Okay, and that is, uh, just south of six hundred north.
Correct.
Okay, okay, just... Yes. Okay, so I got that clarified. And you, were you requesting a stop sign? It says requesting?
No, I don't know why it says that.
Okay.
Except that maybe they give you a very small box, right, what you want?
All right, good deal. We got...
I don't need a stop sign.
Now, did you say a school bus does turn around there?
It does, yes.
Does turn around there, okay.
In the blind drive.
Okay. All right, well, we'll take this under advisement and, uh, uh, thanks for your... Yeah, thank you.
You're not, Gary?
Yeah, no, he could make it. Just, uh, letting you guys know, we're going to purchase, uh, in one of the older sheriff's pickups, a twenty-eight Dodge Ram. Hey, I don't know if there's any... On that, or is it...
We have to, yeah, for the purchase. So, is Chris giving you a five-year warranty or anything?
No, not yet.
Thirty days?
Mm-hmm.
Hey.
What we do, uh, John, is we offer to the county departments if we can get on, get one kind of... Give them one, one or another, but we had, yeah, I had security last summer, he's interested in eight years, um, so that's the... Got a few miles on it. It's a good one.
We need a balance one?
Ten, ten thousand. So, I, I would make a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve the county of purchasing the two thousand eighteen Ram, like, or, excuse me, county highway from the sheriff's department.
And again, the loose price there is ten thousand dollars. Do you know how it's, how it's on the title? That's higher.
The board would build that if it's under the commissioners, I'll work it to you.
Okay, fine.
I'll, I'll sign it, I'll, I'll, I'll sign it, Chuck. I did probably with commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Okay, so all in favor of the motion and the second? Say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, three parts of a report for you on the courthouse project, starting with change orders that reported via email late last week. I have two change orders for your consideration today, two of the higher-dollar requests that I've had to present, and you have copies of them with their documentation in your packets. Uh, change order number thirty. This request, in the amount of forty-six thousand two hundred thirty dollars and ninety-three cents, addresses the removal of high asbestos content caulk in various places where turn metal meets sandstone and a few other locations. Caulk removal was already included in the base bid for the masonry work, so we will be receiving a credit from the masonry subcontractor, but it's certainly not going to cover the full cost of this CO, given the hazmat issue. Three things I want to make sure you understand about this. First, our project manager, Ton and Blank, Matt Nocevich, um, really worked hard looking for, um, vendors qualified to provide this and ended up with a proposal that was basically half of the first proposal he received. Um, we could potentially come up with some kind of cheaper plan that would simply encapsulate the asbestos-laden caulk, but the building would likely still be susceptible to some moisture infiltration. And even if the cheaper encapsulation option did fully keep water out, it would almost surely do so only for a few years before it would give way, because that loose caulk underneath it would eventually apply too much pressure to the epoxy or whatever's used, and we would be back in the same position, meaning that the commissioners and maintenance director of twenty-thirty or so would be spending money replacing our cheap repair job, which is exactly what I hope this county never has to do again after this project. Any questions on that one? And if you have any concerns, I'm gonna throw John Masterson here under the bus. He is on our steering committee, and he was actually nice enough to come on site one day, meet with me and John Allen and take a look at it, because I was hoping maybe in his years of working near the construction industry, he might have had some creative thoughts, but we'd, if this were an interior issue, he might have been able to help, but it's just not something worth cheaping out on.
What these, uh, change orders, prove one by one?
It's up, it's the board's pleasure. Doesn't make a difference on my end.
Okay, let's, uh... Number two.
All right, change order thirty-one, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety cents, addresses walls in the basement. I sat down with Mr. Nocevich on Friday to make sure that I fully understand this, so I could make sure to explain it to you as well as possible. In short, there always was going to be a CO to address this issue, um, but A, I didn't know the specifics of how the base bid was set up, and B, Luminot and Ton and Blank wouldn't know the exact nature or cost of it until we had made sufficient project progress. As I've learned, it was impossible, when the project was put out to bid, for anyone bidding on this work to put the full cost for repairing some of the plaster walls. So they were instructed to include a unit cost. The expectation was that plaster would be repaired as needed in spaces down in the basement where furring and drawwall were not planned. As we dove deeper into demolition, it became clear that plaster isn't just bad superficially, but that its structural integrity is questionable in many places. So not only would plaster repair be costlier than might have originally been expected, but there were questions about how good it would actually look once it had been repaired and painted. We've determined that it, we would spend as much or less money on furring and drywalling than we would with plaster repair and probably end up with a better-looking finish. In short, it was always gonna happen, but it is probably ending up costlier than anticipated, just because of the condition of those walls.
So there's been no cost comparison. Just guessing that it would be about the same or maybe less to drywall and throw it out and drywall.
I, I don't have that comparison, but I know they have worked with whichever sub is doing it, and that's their recommendation, that it's gonna cost more because there's just so much plaster that has to be repaired. And there's no guarantee in some of those places that the walls would be as smooth and flat as they will be if they just put up the new drywall and the new metal studs.
Well, I kinda hate to approve something and it comes back sixty-five thousand, you know, compared to the fifty-nine.
Well, no, this is, this is the official price submitted by the subcontractor. There's no very, that, they have concluded that this is what they can do that work for, so they'll be bound to it in con, their contract with Ton and Blank.
And if it's less, it will be less?
Yes.
Okay, board wanna do this more of the time or both together?
Both together. I make a motion, uh, motion to approve change order number thirty and change order number thirty-one.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I will get that turned around to Ton and Blank before I go home this evening. Uh, quick, uh, date on the project finances. With the approval of these two change orders, our owner's contingency, contingency has an actual balance of two hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and fifteen cents, and an on-paper balance of three hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. And I will note that that number will probably have a little bit added to, um, Ton and Blank, or I'm sorry, Luminot is going to be owing us a credit for something with their consulting engineers, which will probably be eight or nine thousand dollars. Um, and there's a little, in updating our numbers with Luminot for their contract, I miscalculated something, and then we've got a couple of extra hundred dollars coming back in, two nothing significant. But I did wanna clarify, as I explained in the email to you on Friday, um, that contingency is actually a little bit better than it looked like it would have been based on these change orders, because I spent some time comparing our Luminot contract to what I had allocated in the, uh, working budget spreadsheet I'm using for this project, and there was some extra padding I had put into that, or some costs for work that we incurred on the Justice Center that this project does not require because there's no new footprint. There was some, uh, core drilling, things like that that I had built in just in case, but we don't need any of that. So I was able to take thirty-six thousand dollars out of the design line item while still leaving thirty-six thousand over the contract for, uh, incidentals, uh, any chain, like additional services they have to provide, but chances are, most of that thirty-six will end up coming back into the contingency towards the end of the project as well. Um, Mr. Nocevich has expressed that aside from very, a couple of very minor requests still under development. He thinks that with these two, we are pretty largely in the clear from big-ticket, um, change orders, because we're just that deep into demolition and have moved in some places into installation. And so there's very little left for us to discover, um, that's gonna add to the cost like that. And our architect, out of the blue, without any solicitation from me, told me that he thought that, given the actual dollar value of our COs relative to the budget, we are still doing pretty well with those. And finally, um, Ton and Blank has expended very little of their construction contingency, which had a starting balance of a little more than four hundred and forty thousand, and as you remember, that's all our money, so it just never goes to them if they don't have to add that at the end of the day. Um, following the sixth disbursement request, which I submitted to First National on Friday, that tranche of funds has a remaining balance of six hundred and nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirteen cents. We have yet to switch over to the county held tranche, which contains the nine point three eight million plus any interest that has thus far accrued. Any questions on the budget, finances, contingency, so on? All right, just a couple of updates on project progress, then. Uh, concrete has been poured for the walls at the front steps and the mini plaza on either side of the steps, as have most of the footers. They will form the new steps later this week, and depending on scheduling, either pour the concrete for the steps, the new steps, Friday or early next week. Also outside, the masons have finished waterproofing the foundation and have begun installing new mortar on the tower, and the underground structures for utilities are now on site. Other than the work coming from change order thirty-one, framing in the basement is almost done, while mechanical roughens continue, and we've even had some of the painters begin some of the prep work on the main floor. Our next owner-architect-contractor meeting is tomorrow morning with Luminot again attending in person, so they can walk the site with us and check in on various things. Any questions?
I just have one question, not here. Um, Laura and I, we meet with Rowing once a month, and I think I texted you about, you know, the, uh, fiber. Did the Rowing ever show up to check that?
If they did, they did not check in with me. But I didn't, the day they were supposed to be here, I didn't see anyone, and I had sent my number to a couple of guys at Rowing, hoping they would pass that along to the tech who was supposed to be here.
They mentioned a guy named Dave. I will check with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Kevin? For my, Kevin? Nathan?
If not, then I will hand it over to Kevin, so that he can address the recent auction of the IBC Thermo Plastics property on County Road two hundred south.
Yeah, so back in April, the mistresses and council signed a joint ordinance to, uh, have me act as the agent to sir, to sell the property at aid for seven-seven west, two hundred south. This was the real estate that was used as collateral for a loan for the CDC revolving loan fund. That is a fund that, uh, money provided by the state of Indiana to every county to have a revolving loan fund that allows the CDC to give, uh, small or sometimes large loans to, uh, local businesses. These are riskier loans that, where these people couldn't possibly maybe get it from a bank to promote development in the county. Uh, this loan was for, uh, property and a large plastic extruding machine, uh, that sat in the building. It's a very large machine, all of you commissioners have seen it, uh, to make plastic buckets. The business wasn't successful, payments were not being, uh, made, so the county had to go through the foreclosure process, foreclose on the property, uh, then attempted to sell the, the equipment. Uh, it did not sell. It was a very specialty piece of equipment made in China and could not find buyers for it. Uh, so it ended up getting sold with the building, because it would take large, uh, amount of effort to move that piece of equipment. And we sold the building, uh, at auction. We had Olson Auction conduct the sale, uh, and, uh, sold on September twenty-sixth for one hundred, one hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I think that's right. Hundred and two thou, I'm sorry, one hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars, sorry. Uh, and the top bidder was Tom Halleck. We have a signed contract. In pursuit to that, that contract, I'm asking that you approve the sale of that, uh, property for that value. Contract allows you to approve it or disapprove it at this meeting. So you approve it, the closing will happen, and, uh, the money will be refunded back to, ultimately to, through the treasurer, to Nathan's revolving loan fund. That, that money can't be used for anything other than revolving loan fund. If you ever discontinued the revolving loan fund, it would be returned to the state. It's not some used money for, for any other purpose, other than to give you...
All right, second time motion?
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Kevin, is the back taxes taken out of this, hundred and two thousand?
Yeah. I called, uh, the treasurer's office, got the exact back taxes amount, put it into the contract, about nine thousand dollars.
Right.
There was an additional personal property tax on the equipment. That, we are going to pers, have the company that, uh, the treasurer uses to pursue those deficiencies. Go ahead and pursue, uh, the original, uh, Baronoff's that took out the loan, pursue them for that. It was about twenty-five hundred dollars, about... So now, the, the back taxes are gonna be paid out of this sale, which was a, uh...
Hundred and two thousand five hundred, yep.
There you go.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, uh, Badwina, here with the health department. I have a contract with the immunization nurse.
Kevin had sent an email earlier with the new contract on it, and...
I have it at home and an email as well. Dr. Day was upping as well. I think changes we made earlier, uh, over the weekend are in that, plus Kevin had a couple of things, open description area, so I think we would be good to go and go ahead and vote on it. I did wanna mention, one thing in the termination, which is good, is that the health officer, board of health shall have the right to terminate this contract at any time the health department has notified that the Indiana State Department Health Grant Funds will no longer be available. So it is funded through a grant. As you know, many times we approve a position with a grant, and the money doesn't come, and then, so this being a contracted one, not a county employee, then that gives us a little more leeway to say, if the money is gone, so is the position. I just wanted to bring that up before, before we voted on this.
And the, and the contract says that, says that it'll be, it terminates either inclusion of the work or when the funds run.
Yep.
We would need a motion to, uh, approve?
No move.
Other discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're down to the approval of the claims and payroll twenty.
Okay, I've reviewed claims and, excuse me, payroll twenty, and I make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have the minutes of the September third and September sixteenth meeting. Well... I would make a motion to second that. Reese was absent September third. I'll make a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, the conference request from the EMA, um, Rachel, um, you know, um, going to the Indiana Hazmat Conference in Plainfield on October twenty-first through the twenty-third, and another conference, EMAI Conference, Indianapolis. Uh, that's in October sixteenth and eighteenth through the eighteenth.
Well, I would make a motion to approve Rochelle for both of those conferences.
Okay. So don't look for the EMA director last part of October. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one more that's not on the agenda, but Arsha Tetslaw, reporter's office, attending the, uh, Indiana Cores Association Northern District Meeting, October twenty-second, in Logan's Fort.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the conference request.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And discussion items, uh, Reese has, uh, been dealing with the NIPSCO request to trim some trees in Monterey.
I'll, I'll call them tomorrow. This is just, um, routine maintenance trimming.
Unless we had an objection to it, they was gonna go ahead and do the work, as they later stated, so still check in with them and let them know we're okay. Then we have a rowing estimate. This is to put, uh, traditional drops in the EMA, the East Annex... This is to put additional drops in the EMA, the east annex, three workstations there, and there's nothing on a rack, so to speak, so I have a detailed overhaul of getting things properly hung and in proper positions. That would be the, and down the road would be also that facility shared off of space, whatever, but their quote for rowing was nine-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-nine dollars to get this work completed. We'd need a motion to approve its work.
No motion.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And another discussion item, we have a letter of resignation from Tankersley. I am writing to inform you as a board member that I will not continue to, will not continue my contract by legal services to Plaski County, Board of Commissioners after December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. My current contract requires me to provide you with written notice, my intent to terminate attorney-client relationship at least ninety days prior to the ending of the contract. This letter is to serve as notice termination, the attorney-client relationship as of December twenty-twenty-four. Want to thank you and all the previous board members for the opportunity to represent Plaski County, the capacity as county attorney for at least the last fourteen years. Ninety-day notice will allow time for you to find the attorney counsel and give them the opportunity to work with me, to get up to speed on ongoing matters so that the transition can be as smooth as possible, everything I can to assist you in this transition.
I'd like to address that, Chuck, just because I'd like to.
Sure.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to say something. I, wasn't my intention to make a public statement about it, but I'm on the agenda. I didn't expect to be on the agenda. I have simply a letter to my clients to inform them. Now, I assess, I assess every year whether or not I want to continue the capacity as the county attorney, and my contract that I drafted and commissioners agreed to back in, oh, I forget, the last one, I think it was twenty-seventeen. I built into it a ninety-day period for you guys to have a transition, so it's going to be my recommendation that we get somebody, all, because there's so much, teach them and for them to get up to speed with. But I really had great relationships with, I think, sixteen fire board members for the commissioners and many more counsel, and just have to make a judgment every year whether, you know, I've got other opportunities in my practice, I'm grateful for that, and I'm blessed that way, and it's been an honor to serve the taxpayers of Plaski County, but it's, it's a stressful job, and it puts you at odds with a lot of people, and it's, it's conflict resolution, which is by nature, that's what an attorney does, but fourteen years is enough in this role for me. And I'd be happy to help you find somebody and educate them and clean up any other things we can do in the next ninety days. If there's other things, and we're largely got a lot of the recent litigation behind us, I think it's a good time for there to be a transition. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Yes, I don't know. Question?
Okay, well, my contract says that I'll keep track of my time, and I have, and I'm not sure where the last bill is, but I have the bill, but the, I've never billed the county any extra money over and above my contract, even though my contract allows me to do that. So I've never billed one dollar over a fixed amount. But currently, due to the, some of the litigation, I do have in excess, but I don't know how that'll play out over the next ninety days, you know. Work for the county ebbs and flows, so to answer your question, I, the bills should be submitted anytime. I mean, I can submit them at the end of the year, I guess, from now, I don't know what you. Oh, okay, yeah, no problem. Yeah, I mean, December thirty-first, last day, so, right. Whatever your office wants, I can have you submit them, whatever deadline.
I know, but then leave up to, did we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept Kevin Tankersley's record resignation. Ernie?
I'll second it. Other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And the other thing, we have the EMS director update, had ten applications, so sometime soon, we will begin interviewing these people. Some are current staff members, some are, are the outside, so they would plan on talking to all ten and then maybe do a second round if we think we need to of maybe some of the, the top candidates. Just kind of a information thing there. And the last part of business, this is, getting the reporting quote. This is process where they go back through and you can explain this better than I can. It's your stuff, Laura. I have it right here if you want it. Basically, a company comes in and takes care of records.
This quote is strictly for the transfer books that were located in the auditor's office. There's about twenty-five books per district, and there are, I believe, twelve districts and four towns, so about sixteen altogether, twenty-five files per, twenty-five books per. So the total, as they gave you here, is seven-thousand-ninety-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Now, as I reviewed this quote, I noticed that Cass Township was missing, so they're going to have to revise this quote. But I wanted you to be aware of it, and I will come and ask you to approve it once I get the revised quote because technically I can't spend that much money without you saying.
And you said you had the money in your budget, so.
Money isn't in my budget, wasn't expected by this much, but it's there, so I'll bring it back to you once I have everybody in. I expect the quote to be around seven thousand tomorrow.
We will just move forward and process, and once the final amount is in front of us, we will officially approve that. Yes?
I have a second thing going on, a couple meetings ago, new, as commissioners have approved, Cardinal copiers for their proposal on replacing some of the copiers' printers and giving us three of them to replace some of our old things. This is the actual agreement. I was expecting it to be January first or January second, twenty-twenty-five. He actually gave it March first, twenty-twenty-five. There's nothing you need to do today, but this is the one that would have to be approved prior to the end of year, or to tell me what you want changed, and I will let you know.
Information. Easy.
You just tell me when you want to put that on the agenda and approve it.
Do. Anything from the commissioners? Kevin, Laura, anything else?
No, nothing.
Community comment? Okay, thank you for your guess back in the back there.
Is there a running poll on the courthouse change orders today?
Yeah, I could get that.
And is there, but it's also like a project management status dashboard on the project, or like, or is it just coming here and coming updates, or is there a, like a KPI dashboard or something?
Not external, or just internal.
And is that like reported out publicly outside of these reports, like on a regular page?
No, that's what this is for.
Didn't really hear the question, but.
I asked if there was like a, a project management status dashboard on courthouse so that.
I see.
Or if like if it was just coming here to have a dashboard, or if it was public somewhere where we could say, this is the current state of it, like this is when it was planned to be done, here's where we're at, here's what's next, here's the challenges, what's how it's resolved, that type of thing.
Okay.
Or if you guys had access to some sort of dashboard.
If you ever aren't able to do your own, I don't have a problem sharing the reports that I did, I mean, for everything, but everything's internal, and I don't, I don't know what I have access to, we don't come back to as far as the internal. I don't know what sort of reporting I can do from there.
So do they get it?
They get it from the, they get updates from the, either at every meeting or in between as necessary.
So, sorry, just for clarification here, is not a dashboard on a project they have access to, they hear from you verbally from the status of projects?
They're, the only, the only reports on it are done by Nathan, and they're done publicly, and any action that's taken on the project's done publicly. Commissioners sometimes might be able to view the site with him, which is within the accordance of public access law, but all of the reports and all the actions that are taken have been done publicly. This goes back to the first project on the Justice Center when the idea of having a project manager hired was discussed, and it was, quotes were somewhere in the ten percent of the project range, which is incredibly expensive, and Nathan was gracious enough, at my urging, to take on that role as project manager and has done a great job of, because he's an effective communicator, communicating with everybody and doing the reports, and that's been an additional work on his office that he's taken on. It's, it's actually saved the county a tremendous amount, but the only reports that are done are done for these meetings, if that answers your question.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, if no other public comment, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.